Well, I'll submit that in gen. You still, I think it's the pump house, you wanted a-
Yup.
A sample taken?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you wanna, uh, bring it up and give it to Rose, and I'll take it in with the carpet sample.
There we go.
Do we need to make another motion for Gary to, um, yeah. Alright, I'll make a motion to, uh, pay Gary for the cost that occurs for blood testing for the asbestos treatments of the village.
Second.
Rick, second it, can you hear? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, Gary can approve.
Okay, the, uh, the tile that we took out of the senior building-
Yeah.
It was positive for asbestos.
Yeah.
Uh, they asked me if we wanted the glue sample, which means I would have to go in there and scrape quite a bit of glue off from underneath some of those tiles. They have them, they say sometimes it does have asbestos in it. Do you want me to go with that fire, or do you wanna wait until you see if you're gonna encapsulate anything, or?
Well, I would think with the tile, that we would just encapsulate it completely, and just lay down that moisturizing powder, body powder, whatever Beau was talking about.
That would take care of it.
Yeah, um, I don't see the need to, does anybody see the need to, or no?
Okay. One of the asbestos, just to give you an example, one of the asbestos investigations I'm on, they hired a remediation agency-
Yeah.
And they're charging them eleven thousand dollars, just to go in and test, and then if it is positive, they're charging all kinds of fees for going to find a labor department and, uh-
Chilling people.
Yes, chilling.
It is, especially, uh, the people paid five thousand for the house, the asbestos service.
That don't exist anymore, you know that, you know that.
They killed it.
Well, we don't need a, a, a special company to dispose of asbestos, we can do that ourselves, as long as we follow the guidelines. You have to go to a special maintenance site, have to notify the labor department, there's a permit, but, we can do that ourselves.
Right.
If that's the rule you want to take. If you wanna encapsulate everything, that, that sounds a lot of problems there too, it's just the expense of encapsulating it.
Right.
What, what materials you want to encapsulate.
Alright, um, anything on complaints?
Uh, yeah, the complaints are all under investigation, um, I'm not gonna mention any names, I don't think getting people's laundry out at a board meeting. But, John, I have to get together with you for one, is the, i- is the property between the curb and the sidewalk in the village, is that village property?
Do you know, John?
I have no idea.
I have no idea.
We've got some drainage problems, where people are draining, there's some pumps on other people's property, and it has, it has to go out to the road.
Caminson, you're-
You gotta go under the sidewalk to get out to the road, is that gonna be a problem? Do people fix their own sidewalks, or do the, does the village own the sidewalks?
Village owns the sidewalks.
Village owns the sidewalk. I guess if we jump the road around into this issue, or so, a landlord's actually taking out a piece of sidewalk and, and doing it, I mean, it's, you know, it's kinda-
Can the village help any individuals on that?
In regards to-
In regard to going under the sidewalk, a lot of times you can just punch a hole under the sidewalk, I mean, it takes a backhoe to dig a deep enough trench to punch a hole to run a drain pipe under the sidewalk, but, um, it would beat tearing up the sidewalk.
I mean, would we need to charge for that? I mean, that would be a service we would be providing.
Yeah, I think you do.
I mean, so they would just have to pay for the, for what it costs for the guys to actually do it, so they just give the bill, and then it wouldn't be like contractor coming in, so it wouldn't be astronomical.
I'd have to look up the code, but some municipalities will pay people if they have to replace a sidewalk, two dollars a foot or something like that, uh, is, do we have anything like that here?
No, we don't.
Alright.
We take all the burden for the sidewalks.
If, if the village does own, between the sidewalk and the curb, they may have, it might be private property, but subject to a public right of way, I think that's typically what that is. How would we handle that, would, would the people have to pay for that themselves, or would the village pay for- Pay for something into the right of way, or? Yeah. I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head.
They do, yeah, they would have to repair it.
You're right, 'cause if it's just like with a tree, it's still, the village, it's the right of way right there, they might own it probably, but there's right of way.
In Goanda, if the village takes, the village takes care of it.
Yeah.
But the sidewalk is, is not the property of the village, but they will-
But Goanda does give them two dollars.
They'll, they'll give them two dollars a foot for, to replace the sidewalk.
I wouldn't say that if they wanted to, I mean, they could speak with John, but they will get the help for it, 'cause there's nothing at this time that we're giving any-
Well, you see, it is a violation, I, I mean, we're so up and down in this village with elevations, it's hard for some properties not to drain on other people's property. But with a sump pump drain, that's a force-fed drain, that can be pumped uphill and up to the road.
Right.
Uh, and, and that's what some of these cases that I'm on are, are involved with, pumping uphill, and then they gotta go under the sidewalk and up to the curb. And then you can't break through the curb, you gotta put a boulder in the curb.
Right. I would say, I think, I think that's a great idea, calling as far as to do it underneath, and if the village should do it, to bring the backh, backhoe and all that, it'd just be charged to whatever the minimum it is, 'cause that shouldn't take you long to do that, would it?
No, but where we run it, too, once we get underneath the sidewalk, because if there's kinda drain in front of us, we don't wanna go down the road making ice all the long.
Uh, what is it, how many feet along roadways do you have a, a DI? Is there any special rule?
No, not here, no.
John, you're not helping.
Wild, wild what?
There's no- There's some streets, there's other, there's streets in the village that have no drains, there's no, there's no catch basin, there's no tile, there's no muff. And I believe there's a question about, um, if it serves me right, about, it's our tile lines and there's still our drains tied into tile lines. If we go through and put a new drain in, I don't think it's up to us to tie the cellar line back in, because then it becomes somewhat of a liability on our behalf, because if our drain backs up and floods the cellar- So now, if we go out and we bring somebody's sump pump line underneath the sidewalk and we tie it into our drains.
So what do you think is then the right fix for it, and that's why, that's why I wanna go with the-
The fix is to put a, a check down in the sump pump line, then we'll back up.
Okay.
Yes, yes, that's, you know, I, I'm all for that.
So then that's a, that's a cost, so that, for that present.
That would cost the, the property.
Correct, not the village, no.
Yeah, we got it, and we're, the revelations are new, I guess, you know, you will provide, the, the firm provided service of pulling right to sidewalk, and we're gonna do the actual tying that you provided us all parts in the check belt. And if that check belt fails, it's yours to-
We'll work on that. Thank you, work on that, I think that's great, there, that's fixed, done, now-
I just-
Yeah?
In the village, it's the, uh, total, the cost was a total responsibility, 'cause I replaced one for the library, they have to pay for the whole thing, the village, but the village did the tying at the village, uh, line, but they were charged to the owner.
Correct.
That's what we get, we put the check bells.
So then that's, we should do that as well, that makes sense?
Yep.
What about the, uh, complaint on Mills Street?
I haven't, I know nothing about it yet.
Okay.
I have a banana, that's when I want to add a banana.
Okay.
The other complaints that I'm, uh, uh, people are cooperating, uh-
That's good.
They're pleading innocent, they, they don't know, and, uh, I should have a landlord report next week.
Okay. The, there's what the one on Jefferson's taking care of, the lawnmower, um, looks like they're actually doing work on that place, do you know, have they been in contact with you at all, what they're doing, are they fixing it at all?
No, uh, that's kind of up in the air, next board meeting, I gotta do it, it's more about, uh, a head load for the dedication.
Okay. Great.
And for remodeling, you don't need a permit, as long as you're not getting into the construction of the building, you know, it's just partition walls, it's, it's not exterior, uh, or anything.
Anything else, sir?
No, those are-
Thank you, does anybody even have anything for Gary?
Sorry I'm late for the meeting, sometimes I get meetings that are, that clash and-
Thank you, sir.
Alright, uh, John, I'll give ahold of you, then, I, I'd like to take you up to that property, and show you, there are DI's, it's a quarter property, and there are DI's on each roadway, so-
Yeah.
It's not a problem, but we can't drain it on the sidewalk, because in the winter time, it'll flood.
Yeah, very good, yes, you can't say-
Okay, John, but thank you.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate it.
We're good.
Sir, do you have anything to add?
Thank you. Okay.
I'm not in your agenda to make an advice about that, um, I don't wanna get emotional, but I'm wanting to, John knows what I'm here about. There's a easement to the Black Millwell on their property, that allows the village truck people from wherever else to go down to the Black Mill water. I have complained several times about the speeding going on down through there, we have children-
Down the, the actual driveway?
Down the actual driveway.
Okay.
We have a dog, last week, I mean, didn't know who it was, when it came, flying into my driveway, locked his brakes up, and just about wiped out my dog, and my two kids were standing on the edge of the yard. I am done, I have asked and asked and asked for years to slow down, I'm not listening, I know they have a right to go down there, I understand that, I live there, we have children. I'm done, I'm gonna ask that a gate be put up, they can unlock it and walk to the wellhouse, I'm not coming back to this village board meeting with a dead kid, I'm not. And when I yelled at this driver, he shrugged his shoulders at me, until I went and stood in the middle of the driveway on his way out, and he was afraid to come out. As you people as parents should know, you're talking about kids here. And yeah, I did come unloot on him, I didn't even know who he was until he told me it was, uh, Mr. Patterson. First of all, how dare you shrug your shoulders at me, that is my property, that isn't my house, those are my kids. And I don't know what I can do to change this easement road, if I could take it away, trust me, I would, I'm done with it. So we either put a gate up, lock it, they can walk down to the wellhouse, I'm done, or I'm gonna come back here with a dead kid and then what? Woulda, coulda, shoulda. He was polite, John was when I called him and told him what had happened, and he apologized, and I get that, but an apology isn't gonna save my kid's life. He stopped within one inch of hitting my dog. He flew in there so fast, we didn't even know he was coming, from the road to where the back end of my porch is, is where he stopped. I'm done, guys, I'm done.
So, 'cause right now, there's no gate there, right?
No.
So if we have a gate there, and we can still haul all the way down there, if it need be like in the winter time to do testing or whatever, DEC ever gets the, gets the well fixed, and we're able to use it once again, that ever is able to happen. But we're still able to, me to put up a fence and be able to, so the individual, whoever goes there to check the water or whatever, or to plow, can go in and lock it, and then drive through, down through it, we can do that, right?
But then I have this big ugly fence, uh, in my yard, because your drivers don't know how to drive.
How far is it? How far will-
Kinda ways.
I mean, is there any reasonable, like, an interview for that kind of? Don't we take anything back there, we're just doing testing, what? Right now, it's just a matter of testing, um-
Do you have any other solution than a gate, or driving up there, period?
No. Well, I, the only thing that, and please don't get me wrong, I don't know, I mean, if we ever put a back production, we'll have to party back there, but, I mean, there's gotta be a reasonable solution here.
So what do you feel is a reasonable solution?
The lady says she wants a gate, then I guess we'll have to move the gate up there. I mean, that's, if that's what she wants, that's what I have to do, I mean, it's-
What I want is for someone to take responsibility, this is the fourth time, Mayor, that I've had these conversations.
This is me, we're all talking over here, um, I'll let you know that, as I did say to you, I am sorry for what happened, to be clear, the board members, nine o'clock, personal vehicle, um, when it happened that day, we had some issues with air in the lines or anything like that. I'm gonna go and check out some things, try to get the proper John, yes, you're right, I came on your driveway too quickly, uh, so, as I say, yeah, I'm sorry, um, did come to an abrupt stop, when I, I mean, yes, you're right, I pulled in quickly, but that does not necessarily mean careless, okay? I, I understand, I look, the reason I stopped so quickly is because your dog came on front, um, which-
How long have you worked with the village?
Um, three, uh, three and a half weeks.
Have you been down to the middle of town, or three and a weeks is all you've ever worked with the village?
Ever, no, but currently, yes.
Okay, so you've been down to the wellhouse prior to, to that day?
Yes.
You know I have kids, you know I have a dog, so-
You're entirely correct, it was complete lack of thinking on my part, for which I do apologize.
But what's gonna happen when, when someone's lack of thinking gets somebody hurt, there's carbon equipment coming in out of there, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
We clean up that right of way every year, we've never charged the village for it, we've asked several years to have that cleaned up, we do it. The brush that gets thrown onto our property every year, we gotta go to the village guys and say, get it off the property, move it over. You guys need to come up with an amicable solution with me, because I'm not, I refuse to have people driving back down through there until something's done.
Question, how soon would you like to, 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 uh, get over with?
Why don't you come and look, and just tell me where, first of all, you're gonna put this gate, 'cause now you're gonna run it over into my driveway, see what I'm saying?
Can we bypass our property, period, is there any way?
No.
There's, there's got to be-
That's a, like, a-
Rick, I'm just trying to, to save a whole lot of issues, 'cause it's gonna happen again, it may not be minimal, it may be, and I'm gonna, it might be-
I understand, it's, I have this to do with my property, so I understand, you know, the, uh-
But why doesn't-
Is there some morning that would be better for you than I?
Friday mornings would be perfect.
Friday morning?
I can eat Friday morning.
Okay, let's look at Friday morning.
Perfect.
The time of work reassessed.
Get time, you think, John?
If everyone had coffee, but nine thirty ten would be okay.
Nine thirty ten?
Nine thirty ten, bye.
How about this, instead of moving the gate, if we put us, um- Very, so it's like, one of them kind of weird things, like you seen the parking lot, when they put the wall-
Like Jersey Berry?
Not, not one of them, but, but not, but, it, just one of them little thing, you see, like on the school parking lot, there may be a six, eight inches high.
Speed bump?
Not so much even the speed bump, so basically, it's a matter of pulling in your driveway where you feel comfortable, that we can't pass that point, if we have to go down and do anything, check on things, we can walk down. But in the same aspect, if we really have to get down in there with a pickup truck, we could move something, we won't do it, we gotta move down in there, I mean, basically, right now, this man, you're leaning, we're gonna get out of there, is, uh, a lawnmower and, uh, and we do take a valet cat down there and the kids trip. And I did, I do, and I did, uh-
It's moving the road, coming straight over and up the other side towards my parents, but the stand is on the other side of it.
Utilizing your mom's driveway?
No, the one between the barn and the stand.
Right, that used to be there, that road, it used to go straight down.
Yes, it did, um, how would you like to get back over that way?
We have to go straight down, we cut left the way it used to.
Is this on, is this on your house here?
Okay.
Your house is here, and you have a barn.
We can get down there on Friday, and we'll see them.
Yeah, but, you know, let's see what-
I mean, all of us go down, yeah, I do.
Okay, I'm trying to go through there.
And I think that we'll end up with a better answer, rather than-
If we're all there, so you guys know, you're not making any type of decision.
Rick, Rick, I want you to see it, and then we'll decide.
Well, are you, are you be more, would it be more, um, aesthetic looking, if there was just like, you can't go past this point?
I would rather, John, let's-
And, I mean, for those, for temporary, it, then we can, if it's a, if you, if you're okay, your bound's okay, well, let's go on up above and go across the bottom.
Let's look at it on Friday, and we'll, you know, come up to some conclusion, so that way, come the twenty-fourth at our work session, we can go ahead and make the deal, and this is what we're gonna do to fix that, so that there's no more issues.
And I don't have a copy of the original easement, um, they tried to pull it up, I'm worried, and I couldn't find it there, so if someone can try to find that, that easement to that property, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I could blow to that penalty zone, and she could get it.
Okay. I'd like to advise the board that, the rule is not that you can't make a decision without announcing it, it, you can't even discuss the issue, or else that turns it into a public meeting.
So only two of us can attend?
Right, or you're gonna have to have Rose post it out.
You know what, they have plenty of time.
There is, yeah, you have more than seventy-two hours, you've got enough time to do it.
Meeting at-
You'll indicate the time and location.
Post it.
Sure, I can post it, so post it that there's gonna be a public meeting at, at, down at her residence?
Nine thirty, John. Nine thirty.
Friday.
You have more time?
Do apologize.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
So I post it, um, I don't have time to advertise it.
No, you don't have to, 'cause that's not, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna take minutes.
Now, I'm a door, and make sure some of the, and access to-
What's that? Right, anytime.
I know what you're trying to do.
I could put it on the-
Right, but she doesn't have to put it in the paper, right?
No.
Just post it.
Just post it, okay. Gene, um-
One other thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Patterson was spoken to after said it's, uh-
Okay.
I did mention of it, 'cause I guess, I, I don't know why, I think, I guess it was one that, I probably got rolled down in there, and I probably went over it, but I do understand the issue with her, it's not a problem, we'll take care of it, I did pull harder leave.
Thank you.
Apologize to her, and, you know, and it's-
Well, this has been, that's her a long time for, for her-
This is not, then, the first time this happened, and I do, oh, I don't understand her point of view.
Absolutely, well, Friday, we'll come up with some type of resolution on it, and it'll be finally resolved after how many years that she's been upset that, the way it's been, 'cause it, like I said, it hasn't been the first time, and every time, I know she's been very upset, and thank you for taking care of that, and-
Well, it's, it's one of the things that's, that happens, it's, you know, not everything is really perfect, it's something that's happened, we try to keep it, to a medium. There is one other thing I have to ask her, we bought a paving machine sometime back-
A paving machine?
Yes.
Okay.
We have learned, the hard way, that running a paving machine is a-
Can?
I have a, a mat, we don't use it enough to really get that mat down, or sell it. And I wanna take the money that we get from it and either rebank or go listen to Skittle, but, uh-
So put it down, how much do you think it's worth, right?
I have no money, yeah, I can't even afford to pay for it, do you wanna go to where I can work, and the address actually we pay for it, well, I mean-
How long ago was it?
Oh, I think it's been there four or five years, I think it was like fifteen or sixteen hundred, I think it was thirty-five hundred, I can't remember, but it, it sits there, I mean, you know, I get it out, and we go through, we get, we have to take it out, we use it, it does okay, but it's like, you know, um-
Is it only five years old, is it?
No, it's, it's old, it's old machines.
So just put it up for auction, and then whatever we're able to get rid of it for, we can put that towards whatever funding needs to go to.
The, the equipment on the, on the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, Greg, yeah, John.
That's absolutely fine.
We need to make a motion, or whatever the else?
You may have to declare that as surplus, I'm not certain. You may have to declare it surplus before you can sell it, I'm not sure, I know you do with land, but I'll, you do with equipment.
So, what, do we just need to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to declare it surplus, and randomly have to order it to go along.
Alright, so then I'll make the motion, Rose, that we're gonna grant that as surplus, and that give John, hey, that we're gonna give John the authorization to go ahead and put that up for auction, uh, to sell it, can anyone second?
I'll second. We were actually just discussing maybe to kind of ball through, and make it, maybe have more surplus, things that they don't use, things that don't work.
More equipment?
The only thing I really got, it sits over there, I told you about the water tanks now, flatbed, we put that on auction, I don't think we even so much as got a bid on that.
No.
I can, you know, all, I do have a few odd Elgin parts, we got a transmission out of the, well, Monty Old Elgin, but I think it's like out of a forty-six or forty-seven or National truck.
I mean, you never know.
I mean, I, I, you know what, I'd throw it on auction, I'll tell you what, if we got twenty-five or thirty bucks on it-
I trust your judgment, you're the DPW superintendent, I trust your judgment in regards to what you believe is to be surplus, or what you deem as surplus, and that you can get rid of, and whatever you utilize to make, bring on life, that you can spend towards the helping, so I, I trust you that, can we just make the motion then, that, anything that you deem to be surplus?
You-
Well, I want to see the list.
You, oh, you're probably gonna ask for less than that, from the rest.
I mean, I don't think we can just say-
I, I would not even-
Okay, so then at this point in time, we're just talking about the paving machine? Okay, Rick made a second on that.
No, it's not, my business is conduct.
If there's any more that you wanna get rid of?
We'll make a list, and then you can go get it.
Just bring it in, then ask me.
Might be that.
Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Yeah.
No.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Did everybody say aye? Okay, it's unanimous, Gary can approve.
I just made, maybe there are a lot of, yeah, that's what I'll, what I'll do.
So you'll bring it back for the twenty-fourth?
I'll go through, and I'll figure out, like, I think we're gonna make some money on it, and I'll give you a complete list.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I don't, like, if I'm the one, I don't want you to think I'm trying to pull, I'm not trying to-
I don't even want to.
I want everything documented on paper for a lot of reasons in life that just, you know, 'cause then somebody comes back, oh, geez, you know?
I understand where you're going.
Yeah, I'm just-
I'm really young, John. I would just say that there's like, even if there's like ten things, we want to come look at it all at once, and not be like, just, you know?
Well, and if I'm gonna spend the time and try to figure out how to put this on auction at a National one, or should I, should I push to go ahead and book it on, I might as well have ten things on there, or, or in that type of problem.
Right, Gene, you're up.
Can I, uh, you lead me, or?
Just one thing, the brush down on Main Street, I know last year, John or somebody cut it, there's a lot of people that walk by my house, and it's right down by where the dentist office, Mathias' building.
Yes.
It's like covering three-quarters of the sidewalk, sumac trees and so forth, I know last year, the village cut it, I mean, I'm just thinking of people walking by.
We'll reach out and, let's out here, one of these days.
Okay.
Reach a couple of spots, I, I had to chipper for a while, I got some of the bigger stuff, but, um, definitely medical background, and you can make it, I'll chipper on the sidewalks and the plow, make sure things clear, and we'll work on that, you would think so.
Um, I had my books out here from last fiscal year. Um, I had my books out here from last fiscal year.
I'm gonna look at them.
Not that we had books and signed off on them. Could you guys make a point to look and sign off, please? Are there any questions about the books that you guys looked at?
Is there any way we're able to have more electronic than we?
I checked into it, and for the cost of the software, I didn't wanna put a burden on the village.
What software would that be, do you know?
Would be some, uh, where we get our books from. Williamson Law Book.
Williamson Law Book, okay, do you know how much that costs?
I checked into it, I believe it was like twenty-five hundred.
Do you know what that could come, could that fall?
So right now I'm using Excel.
Right.
And then I keep a ledger, so.
Are you able to have like an Excel ledger?
I tried setting it up, but it would just either do the writing and the, it's just written in, it's probably the asset liability issue.
Okay.
I looked into it because I thought maybe we could split the cost with the town for the software. I just, for the cost, I just didn't want to burden the village on the cost. I'm sorry?
There's a lot, a lot of the bookkeepers are using other programs besides Williamson.
See, that's the one that we buy our ledgers from, and that's who I contacted.
Well, yeah, that usually, yeah.
Is that usually whoever?
Some of the clerks use, there's another software, BAS, they talk about.
Yep, I use Tom Clerk, uh, BAS software.
There's, there's lots of them. The, the problem, the State Comptroller's Office was supposed to be coming out, this was several years ago, with a unified. System for accounting that all bookkeepers have used. And then they were concerned about that because they didn't wanna create a monopoly. But, but on the flip side, they would not authorize or certify any one of the, there's tons of companies out there. Some people are using quick and, quick and books. So they recognize all the different software packages that people use. They don't approve or disapprove of any of them, I guess, as long as the authors can figure your books out, it's okay with them, so. But there are, I know Williamson tends to be probably the most expensive.
Yeah, they were.
For a long time, they were the only game in town, for the longest time.
That's true.
You can only get your abstracts from Williamson, you could only get cash receipts and cash prescriptions and general ledger and election forms and all that stuff. They were the only game in town. And then that's not the case now. And a lot of stuff is, you just go online and download before, you don't even need, you don't need to order from anybody, you just go online and get it, so.
I would like to see for going on, because I don't know how much longer you'll be doing this, or how much you care to, you've already got forty years in. I'm just thinking of somebody that comes in next to take over, I don't know how much they're gonna know in regards to utilizing everything actually being on paper, that's the only thing. So if there's any way in the next year, if we can work towards having everything being.
Mostly what I can do.
If you can, um. You, Rose, can you get a list for Gene on all the softwares that uh. That uh, we was just talking about, like BAS?
It seems like there ought to be something out there that. I mean, I'm a not-for-profit, I get stuff, you know, kind of the software that they'll give. It's great, I mean, real world, that's, uh, as a not-for-profit, it seems like there's something, something out there that caters to the.
I mean, I can give him a, a contact number for BAS, but as to me looking for software for him, I'm not sure that.
Well, if you give me the one that you use, I'll look into it.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely give you contact on BAS.
We, Rose, we can ask at the first meeting, who's using what. And a lot of people are using Excel programs that they created themselves, I mean, you're not off the beaten path, Gene, with, with that, all my spreadsheets, I created my solid.
On Excel?
With it, so.
Okay.
And then you can customize your own formulas, whatever, you know, whatever.
Are you uh, able, I was hoping maybe in the next work session, because.
I won't be here. You won't be.
In town, so. What day is it? Oh, August twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I guess I think I will be in town that way.
We'd love to have you.
Because I would like, if you could go over, uh, the books with all of us.
Yeah.
And go all the way down, uh, that we have, so we have a, I think.
I tried giving you guys everything on the capital funds and reserve accounts last meeting, I think it was the last meeting. And nobody really asked anything about it, so.
What's the one you have there, that you?
That's one I've transferred there.
I appreciate that, that, I'm enlightened. I didn't know we had that much in savings.
Well, we have a lot now because of that money that came in on FEMA and, you know.
You did well with that?
And it's beginning of fiscal year.
When it comes to fund balances, I'm a little conservative.
That's true.
We all appreciate that, Gene. And with you.
You can ask past board, it's a total board, because it's hard not knowing, when you have to come up with a balance. In March, what's gonna happen between March and May thirty-first, so.
Yeah, I was.
March? My board wants it in January.
Well, we go March. And then you have like the different reserve accounts.
Do you think this is something that you can provide us at a meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna change, the reserve account can go on board.
Right, but just to see what is actually transpiring, I would like to see that, to see a trend of what we actually, you know, because also this will help see, okay, this is when we're getting our, you know, this is when we get taxes, this is when we're getting water, oh, that makes sense, so that we understand, you have. Good grip on what is actually coming in and what's going out, because all I see is just constantly signing for vouchers and, you know, it's like.
Right.
Just saying. And also, I mean, you know, we got a bunch of grant money and all that, but also what we're gonna have to put in board with the water project, and what we're gonna be looking with that, some more coming and all that. I can.
No, I appreciate that, but this was.
That was great, yeah, thank you.
My thanks for the fast response.
Pardon?
My thank you for the fast response.
Uh, that's all I have.
Does anybody have anything else for Gene? Um, I do know that. Uh, duh, 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 for my own contractual expenditures or expenses, uh, because of the trip to, uh, that I emailed you and discussed with you, the trip to, uh, Lake Placid. Uh, you said that I was gonna need to, I would go over, I would need to increase my expenditures.
Were we talking about, I thought Jay?
Yeah, the fall training school.
For Jay and myself as well.
Oh, okay.
Both attending that conference.
I don't know how much you're talking about.
What were we talking, Rose, that I?
Um, you said you wanted to increase it at least a thousand.
Is what I would need for.
For the conference, and then any cop, any, like, county municipal meetings?
Yeah, which we got, CCMO.
Right, and then if you wanna do those mailings that you were talking about, you're talking another.
Hundred and fifty?
Per mailing.
Per mailing.
Yeah.
We're gonna do like a quarter, quarterly mailing?
Yeah, so you're looking at another six hundred dollars?
Yeah, we just did every. We really need to get Facebook up and running, that's what we forgot.
Facebook, Facebook page is up?
Right.
I just, I have two settings that are not working with.
I will get with you tomorrow, I'll fix that, so we can, so we address.
You need a motion to transfer from the contingent account, that's your.
Okay, so I would need a motion to transfer.
X amount of dollars.
A thousand dollars from contingent to.
Mayor expenses.
To mayor expenses, alright, so I'll make.
What, what is it wrong with?
Uh, it is, Rose, what is it ringing out?
We raised it this year when Dan took over, I think it's twelve fifty?
Twelve fifty, he's already spent, um, eighty-something out of there, so he's got eleven sixty-eight twenty-five, is what I have.
Yeah.
You're expensive.
I am.
Well, I'm saying, what's it been in the past?
Uh, the past, the mayor contractual's been.
Couple hundred.
Yeah, two hundred, maybe.
Go, go into, uh, the Lake Placid Conference from NICOM. So hopefully we gain a lot there and more grants, like.
If they had more information on stuff like that.
I'm sure, I mean, they say this is the biggest convention thing that they have, that they do, so there should be tons of things and tons of knowledge that comes from it. Yeah, alright, so, I mean, I'll make the motion for, what, increasing, like, transfer or increasing?
You have to transfer from a contingent account into the mayor expense account.
Okay, so transfer a thousand dollars from the contingent account to the mayor contractual account, so what, that'd be a total of twenty-five hundred then?
Be twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty, excuse me, twenty-two fifty.
So you're actually rating it?
Right.
Yes.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Rick, second it. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me.
Work.
No.
Alright, it's three to one, so three deas and one aye. It's approved, motion carried.
They don't have training, like, more training at the county level, or like on the webinars and all that stuff?
Well, they have some, the NICOM Conference and this.
County level.
Yes.
County level is called New York State Association of Counties, they're about to go to somewhere in September. That's for county issues. Um, the town of New Albion would go, their organization would be called the Association of Towns, that's where they deal, if your clerks go or your supervisors go. NICOM is the New York Conference of Mayors, designed specifically for villages and cities, and they will have speakers from comptroller's office, from, um, people on, on grant funding, on public water and sewer, as it applies to villages. So the webinars that the county has are basically training for county level stuff, I sat in on several of them. And the county doesn't usually provide training for towns and villages, because their governmental structures are different. So, New York Conference, NICOM is the place to go in the fall school, if you're gonna go. New mayors are really encouraged to go, also the, um, Cataragis County Municipal Officials Association is open to all of you trustees, your clerks, your mayors, it's a dinner meeting six times a year. We have speakers and topics that.
For waters?
Villages.
What's coming up in the next one, is it the waters, the mill and our watershed, or is it the?
We're still working on, we're still working on getting Tom Hart to drive to the comptroller's office, and I really don't know what Terry's working on, but it, it'll be in September.
I guess what I meant to count, I, I would, I'm more thinking, well, is it just something closer, cheaper?
All we have is NICOM, really?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm here reaching out to, you know, other villages and people with more experience, so instead of, you know, passing a taxpayer, so much to go here or there, you know.
Well, I mean, you look at the benefits, though, of what we're able to bring, what you're able to bring back is, you know, as far as for grants and helping, and that's what we're gonna be starting with our next process with, um, in September. With, working with J.C. O'Connell, is looking at what we can apply for funding for grants and really start bringing some money in and getting projects done and benefiting the community, so.
It's not intended, doesn't necessarily at our level of funding out here. It's not something that you send somebody to every single year.
Mayor should go at least once or twice.
But every couple, three, four years, as new stuff, they always put out the schedule. I've been three times.
How about?
After, after about so many sessions of how to take minutes.
But there are things for the mayors, I mean. No, I understand. My, my concern is, we, we increased that they, you know, we've already spent a lot already in training, it seems like, you know. Because let's say we get a new mayor and two years from now, we spend that same money to go do the same thing, I mean, it's just.
It would, would be.
When you get a new mayor, you should.
That is never helped.
If you get a new mayor.
Operator, they've gotta get the training.
No, I agree.
They've gotta go to school and maintain their licenses.
Yeah, if you get a new mayor, he should go. Yeah. Really, and that's what it's for.
And then what do we need to do for Jay's?
He'll have to do the same thing, transfer from contingent, it is, set up an expense account, because you get away with the expense account.
Created it.
Put it all into personal services, period of waiting.
That's right.
So he has no expense account at all.
So, and then also the check for the twenty-five hundred dollars that we were, that's supposed to be coming, are we able to then put that into that and to utilize those funds to go towards paying for the training?
Yeah, after when that check comes in, yeah.
Okay, so then, what, we need to make a motion for how much for Jay?
Oh, sorry.
Well, have you got it?
I'm not sure what the total is.
Waiting for my report, darn.
I don't know what the total is for sure, um, I'm assuming the room's gonna be.
Well, just, if you got that check, we could do that check now, if, if that's a check that you have to.
Right here. I was waiting for my report, darn. Okay, so, uh, yeah, NICERU granted us the twenty-five hundred, I sent in the request and the ID number again, for our federal tax ID that came in the mail today.
Nice.
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
Excellent.
Easy peasy.
And when it comes time for mine, I wanted to talk about getting the other one, too.
Okay.
So what you could do is, at that time, increase to revenues by twenty-five hundred and increase your appropriate, estimated appropriations and use that check.
Okay.
Into his expense account.
Okay, so.
That's what you wanna do.
Okay, so then we need to make a motion to, well, I don't know, do you wanna do it now, wait till Jay gives his report?
No, you can do that now.
Okay, so how much are we, you know, or?
I mean, you wanna put the whole twenty-five hundred into his expense account, is that?
I mean, I don't know to the extent that we're gonna use all of that, it'll be the fall training school and that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Have you got any other expenses, though, for everything I do, been doing for the board, or?
Nope.
I mean, you can put it in there, if we need to transfer it, we can, that way he does have an expense account.
So then just put twenty-five hundred dollars in the expenditure account for the attorney? Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
It's three to one, it's approved and carried. Alright, uh, Jay, why don't you go next, since we were just talking about.
So. I'd asked the board, I think this is a month and a half ago, to adopt a unified solar panel permit application. For when people wanna put solar panels on their houses, if it's below a certain size, if it's below a certain wattage, if you have a certified architect or electrician signing off on how it's going to be, what the inverter's gonna look like and how to attach into the grid. That as long as all of that's taken care of, they pay their fifty bucks to the village, record looks at it, and gives them the ability to put in a solar panel in their house if they want. I don't know that anybody's doing it, but you adopted that by resolution, I took it to the New York State Energy Research and Development Agency, and they had an incentive program, and granted the village twenty-five hundred bucks, and. Well, the, the funding application, the consolidated funding application for grant writing, asks a load of unrelated questions, what for something as simple as, did you adopt the resolution? Check box, yes or no? So it took a long time writing a bunch of BS fluff about how it helps the environment, and how it encourages development, and how it streamlines government, yeah, a lot of BS. There are two different incentives available, one was for photovoltaic installation, you know, solar panels, done. The second one is a little bit more complex, and I would like, if possible, for there to be a committee formed, just me and one board member, or whoever else wants to. To look into what we would have to do, or how the village would choose to adopt a, an electric car charging installation permit application. And it has a second part that requires a parking ordinance, saying that electric cars don't have to pay the parking fee in public parking spots. I don't think you charge for parking anywhere in the public in the village, but you adopt a resolution saying you're not gonna charge for electric cars, and you may have to create one spot that has a charging port for electric cars.
When does that have to be committed, or is there no time?
I believe September is when NICERU's funds get drawn back, or they continue it until the funds run out, so there's some degree of urgency in that we want it to be done before any of the funds run out, and I don't know, they don't give you an estimate on how long their program runs.
Okay, uh, who wants to work with Jay on that? Vote?
Alright.
Rick?
What?
Work with Jay on.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll be in touch with both of you, because there's some extra.
Who has the vote of you?
I'll send you an email, some documents and things that we should talk about.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
So we're gonna have an electric post right next to the office. I think this would be just great, I mean, we could make.
That would be hilarious.
Bring in tourism.
Can I take a motion for a permit recess?
No, I, I agree, yes. I'll second it. I'll second it. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Gene, unanimous, carry and approve. Uh, Gene, I don't think we need anything else, sir, so if you wanna head home, you're free to go.
Um.
You told me the same.
I told you the same thing, you have to say.
We, we should talk about how we're splitting out the superintendent's pay.
Oh, yeah, we can collect for that.
We had some, we didn't even talk about it. I actually brought one copy of papers.
Cause the first one, I was.
That would be.
It was pretty easy, but I can understand the motivation.